Well. All right, this is Robin Denson, City Council, and I'm calling to order the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee's special meeting of March 22nd. And we'll go ahead and do the call to order. Robin Denson, City Council.
Tracy Markley, City Council.
And then we also have Mayor Kit Hune.
Here.
Josh Decker. Our lobbyist Dale Lern and Annika Vaughn.
Hi, everyone. And just a heads up that Josh will be joining. He just has a meeting until 4:15, but then he'll be hopping on.
Great. And then City Administrator Bob Larson.
Hey.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th?
Move to approve.
All second. All those in favor?
I.
Okay, discussion items. So Dale, you're up with federal funding opportunities.
Yeah, well, you know, I really appreciate Jeff and Bob and his team getting together some requests that we have on these various processes that seem very chaotic. I would only say that this is very new to Congress over the last 10 years, and that's part of the reason why a lot of the senior staff and members don't really know how to do it yet. So these deadlines and processes and scope and things like that are somewhat unknown, but they want the information and it's important that we get involved in the process. And we, I think we did a good job with the Murray solicitation and with the Kilmer community project solicitation as well. And there are two different kinds of processes. We spoke with Senator Murray's Legislative Director Ben, and Ben indicated the Senate process for community funding, AKA earmarks, will probably be later in April because they're kind of waiting for the President's budget, or at least what they call the skinny budget, to sort of start that process. And typically, a Senate takes a little longer, but the House has started in earnest. We had in trying to discern the scope of the House process and the type of projects they're looking for, the House Committee did put out some guidance and we read, Paul and I read through that and then asked a lot of questions of various people we know on the House side and and got a good understanding of what they're looking for and how we can be involved. And we've done at least step one on that. As far as the submission to Derek Kilmer and on a couple of discrete projects and the Senate process again will be in April. Now, what's next on this is, as indicated, the community support aspect is important to members. Some members will be more than others in talking with Congressman Kilmer's Legislative Director, Katie Allen, the indication is that'll be critical. Now, I think I said it in an email, which is the senior staff members and the member don't really read the substance of a formal support letter for a project. They just see the, it's to them that the regards line is the project and it gives some description of it and there's an endorsement of it. And on the scale of what's important to them, the two projects we've submitted on the, for Kilmer are both transportation related. So you know, elements of government as you move up is more important. So if you can get a state endorsement of some sort, you can get state legislators to send a formal letter. You can get, you know, maybe some, maybe, you know, someone like Derek Young to support on the government side. And then as, as the projects have community support, you know, you know, interest groups, I know that one of them may have an alternative transportation impact. So, you know, folks that are interested in that, the chamber, any nonprofits that have spoken out or been interested in the two projects. Then the third, I mean, we can, and I think we should initiate that. Now, the committee has said that the deadlines for these community funding projects would be mid-April. They've now moved that to the end of April, which is good and maybe in concert to the Senate. But so we have several weeks, but not a month. So I would, because again, the House members get, can only ask for 10 projects across the 12 appropriations bills in their entire district. So to be competitive. Now, not a lot of those 12 appropriations bills have, have these designations. So some of them, like Department of Defense, don't have them, but several of them do. More than half of the 12 bills will have the ability of members to ask for, for funding directly in the, in the bill. So getting those community support letters to, to the members' offices, mid-April, early April would be helpful. I think whether it's Jeff or Bob or myself or a combination, speaking with Andrea, who's, who's his district director or her designee would be helpful. In that timeframe as well, sort of giving them an overview. I've spoken with Katie Allen on his DC office, and I'll do so again on this, but getting that local feeling about what they think are important in their district will be important. I think Katie and Derek Kilmer will look to Andrea and her staff to say, well, this is good and this isn't. Making the case and the narrative of why our two projects are will be helpful. And we can get that going. On the the Murray side, I think, you know, we have a little bit more time, but, but meeting with Colleen as well will be helpful on the four projects we've submitted for their process. That process will likely morph into their appropriations asks as well. And I think getting with her will be helpful, too. Cantwell will also have some sort of process that we'll probably know more about in that late April timeframe, too. So what other processes do we have? Outside of just the Senate appropriations process and there's this, as I've spoke, which confused, has confused a lot of people. The Surface Transportation Bill, which could morph into a larger infrastructure stimulus type bill, which the President indicated today, he will have a proposal which will be massive soon. And they may go use the reconciliation process for that, too. They may, either the Surface Transportation and/or the larger infrastructure stimulus bill could have the ability of members to influence what, through, again, an earmark-like process. The House Committee of Jurisdiction Over Transportation indicated they want to do that and put out some basic rules. That deadline for them is not known yet, but we think it could be, again, a late April, May kind of timeframe. So we'll see and monitor that as well. I think I'm done with, then maybe we may have a build grant application. It was called a Notice of Available Funding in April as well, which you usually have two or three months to finish, which could be one of our larger highway projects, might be a good candidate. So that's a lot, I know. And again, this is relatively new, some of these processes to Congress. A lot of this, I did this a lot years ago for the Senator and no one is there now that works for even the senior members like Senator Murray that did this. There's one person on her staff that ever did this, and he's the Staff Director on the Health, Education, and Labor and Pensions Committee. And he's all policy, so he, he wouldn't be involved in this process. So with that, I'll take any questions or any concerns. But I again, want to thank Bob and Jeff for, you know, on the fly with a lot of pressure from, a lot of unknown, from deadlines, from members of Congress and things like that, because they don't, they didn't know a lot of what they're doing. They don't know a lot of what they're doing in this process either. Putting really, really good. I thought that the two projects we put in for Kilmer were well crafted and had a very good narrative on both.
Dale, I had a question.
Yeah.
The Kilmer process was really, really quick and thanks to Jeff and Bob, we were able to get some projects submitted, but one of the things that held us back a little bit was we had the five projects that council had approved. Would it be to our benefit to come up with some more projects to have council approved in the event other opportunities come up quickly? We'll have a list that you can go through with Bob and Jeff and the mayor to say, okay, this is perfect for this because you probably know what's most competitive. Then we'll be, we can jump on things a little bit faster. We're not limited.
Yeah, no, I, that's a good question. I, I agree because the, the opportunities are somewhat diverse in the sense, we did talk about sewer projects. Now, there was a question from, I think, Jeff, that would they have to adhere to Clean Water Act standards? And yes, they would, which is very costly and burdensome when it comes to reporting. So that, that may, may, may make, may take out that, sort of a project like that. But there's like economic development projects. If you read through the guidance on the House list, which will likely be similar to the Senate, there are projects like, you know, police technology, there are things like, again, the economic developments that I think in one of my emails, I kind of give a kind of quick flavor of what, what is considered available on that, as the House has indicated. And it would be helpful to have, I mean, we have a couple road-related projects. You know, one or two others that may fit some, some of these other areas that the Congress wants to earmark. And I can put it together, a more of a, like a a flavor of, I'm trying to think of a good word for it, of what we think they'll be looking for, or what, what's, what's in the, what's in the pot, the element of possibility? What is, what is possible?
Right. Might just be good to have some in the queue projects that we're planning on doing this year or next year anyway. And if there's funding that fits, we could go for it. Mr. Larson, you had a question?
Yeah, I wanted to compliment your comment, Councilmember Jensen. Of those five we submitted, obviously, there's a major break between the first three and the, and the, and the second two, or the first three and the fourth and fifth ones, because of the, of the numbers difference as far as the costs. When might we know, Dale, if any of those projects are suitable, but they just aren't going to rise to the level, or they might rise to that level? You know, if someone's going to be able to tell us, hey, you know, of those five, you probably don't, you don't want necessarily keep submitting on, you know, whatever, item X or items, item Y. Letting all five are in great shape. We've got them ready to go. I would think we would score at least on one of them between Representative Kilmer and then the Senators Murray and Cantwell. But, you know, I wouldn't necessarily want to bring up more projects if we, if we feel that those aren't going to be any, any better than what we've already presented on a united front from Mayor and Council. And I wonder when, when in that process, we're going to find that out. Also, I want to mention all the credit for those applications that were sent in are front and center with Jeff Langham. I had nothing to do with them. Jeff did, did all that work. Thank you very much, Jeff. And I know Mayor supported it heavily, too, but I can't take any credit for that. And I don't want to, I don't deserve it. So thanks, Jeff.
Welcome. Well, Bob, it's a great, great question. It, we played this game with, with these sort of new processes and these members where they're not going to ever tell you that something isn't competitive. They're never going to tell their constituents, oh, that's a bad project, or this is not going to fit. There's things that won't fit, right? And we got some intelligence on the size they're looking for of projects, that the fact they want them to spend money right away. You know, we, we got some good intelligence on things we intuitively probably knew already, but we were able to confirm those are the kind of things that are, what they would see as, as competitive. So it's kind of a shell game in the sense of knowing what the committee will allow to be earmarked, knowing what sort of the parameters are, and then kind of trying to get a glean from the member, you know, what they're looking for. And that's what we did with, in a short timeframe with, with Derek Kilmer. With Senator Murray, it'll be probably a little bit broader in the appropriations process because she is one, a US Senator, and two, you know, the second most senior member of that committee, the Appropriations Committee in the Senate. So we'll know more about what she'll look for as we continue to talk to Ben through April and getting to know a few other projects. And I know that Jeff is probably cringing, but he did a great job, and I appreciate that to make it easier.
That's why I'm stern.
You know, just to.
You've got a lot to lift, those five projects, and continue to lift those. And we're going to have to spend a lot of time with those and and try and introduce some others that we may or may not think might be successful. I think we'd want to stick to the program we've got. Otherwise, you've got to go back, you know, get to the authority from council, and then we're not sure how those are going to all pan out. But if we had any indication at all that those, one of those five, or two or three of those five had, had some, had some staying power, I think we should emphasize those as much as possible. Those are the ones that we really want to hit on anyway. They're, they're projects that are ready to go. So.
They'll never tell us. They'll tell us that you'll know when they're in the bill. That's it. I mean, they'll, they'll tell you, you know, someone like Katie Allen may say, oh, this looks great. And that may, that may give you the, this makes the 50%, right, of all the various jurisdictions that ask. You'll get something like that, but you won't get, this is a clear winner. And when I did that process for the Senator for five, well, for six years, you know, it's, it's a game face, right? You know, even if you saw something that really blew your mind, you'd be like, you didn't want to show your hands or your cards because you don't know what kind of constraint you could be under when, when the committees, you interact with the committee on what's, what's available. So we have to use interacting with the senior staff who's dealing with the process, both in Kilmer's office and our two senators, a little bit of knowledge of how it used to be, a little bit of knowledge of the guidance that comes forward and, and, you know, continue to interact with. And again, I think in the next few weeks, interacting with both Andrea or her, her rep at the district level from Kilmer's office and then, and then Colleen, you know, in, in sort of selling a narrative on how great our projects are and how important they are to his district and her state. You know, is the way we do it. And getting, getting those community affirmative community support is, is helpful and, and you know, I, again, I would love to to tell you that this project or that project's a sure winner and we may even think it is and we won't know. And again, going back to when I dealt with the process, they were ones that people would have said, oh, that's not a sure winner. But they did become. And so that's kind of what we're, we're dealing with. Now, when this process matures, you know, again, coming back to this, it's been 10 years. You know, next year, I assume the Republicans already signed off on the process last week. Next year, they'll do it again. They'll be, it'll be more mature, right? They'll back to it. There, there'll be more of a process. There'll be a budget by the President in early February. There'll be hearings beginning. There'll be, we can see what happened in 2022. Hopefully, we had a winner or a couple. And we can kind of see what they, you know, what the Congress did like and what they didn't like and what the members like Derek Kilmer, who's on the committee as well, or Senator Murray, or Senator Cantwell, what they did like. We'll have a better feel for that.
Mr. Langham?
Yeah, I just, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that when I spoke with Trent Moore, City Engineer, about other projects, when we started having a conversation about, well, these five projects will council approve? Is there anything else? Water, sewer, whatever? One, the, the question of shovel-ready came in, and we really don't have a whole lot else that is shovel-ready that we thought was at a, at a dollar threshold that we, Trent and I, was worth going after federal monies for. So that's how we came down to that, even if, for, at least for 2021. If we talk about 2022, when we put together our budget for 2022, and the next time we get into this situation, I totally agree with Councilmember Nelson. There's, there's probably going to be a bigger list that we can hopefully go after.
So Member Markley, did you have any comments before we move on to the state?
Um, I was just going through my email. I found, I found the email that has the, I think it was from February 10th, where you listed out the House side. Were you talking about the House Oversight and Reform Committee providing reconciliation provisions for state and local governments? Is that the criteria that you were just mentioning when you were talking about the email you had sent? On the House.
Councilmember, I think that relates to the state and local government funding that came through the COVID relief bill.
Oh, that, yes, that is. So I'm missing emails from you, I think. I don't know if it's our new email system. I'm missing emails from a lot of people, actually, who have said they've sent me things. There's something going on since we did our switch over with my email. Things are getting blocked and some things are getting in. And so the information that you were just talking about that with those guidelines, can you resend that to me? Would, would that be okay? Because I, I'm looking all in here and I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing it. And, and then I remember seeing before we switched over, I think it was before we switched over, I saw the, the emails back and forth about those five different projects and the, the communications, and that's all gone, too. So I don't know where it went. I wouldn't have deleted it. So I don't know if it just got all mixed up, but whatever you think is pertinent that I need to keep, if you don't mind, just reach, just shoot off those emails. That, that would be super. I would really appreciate it.
No problem.
Yeah, because I just can't, I can't find it. So thank you. That would be my only thing to ask right now because I can't look at, I can't see the information that you sent. So.
I think it's also Mr. Lern's best guess on a lot of it, about what they might be looking for. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for, for all of this and for giving us the information that you do have and kind of trying to guide us in this direction. Hopefully, we can have some good results. When you're, I guess one other question I had was when you're asking, we need to ask for letters of support for these various things from state reps, from Kilmer, Young, and also chamber businesses, any, anyone in the community that you think would also benefit from these, try to get support letters from them?
Yeah, the members of Congress that, no, because you're, you're asked, I mean, because we're asking them for something, but anything beyond that, I mean, below that, I guess, from a, from a government perspective, you know, whether it's state or county or state reps, state senator would be helpful. And then chambers, anybody who's very interested in these projects, you know, anyone special interest, if there are groups that involved in, you know, non-motorized, you know, mobility and transportation, like some of these aspects, those, those are helpful.
Okay.
And I think in particular Kilmer will be very, he said that, and his legislative director has said that community support will be helpful.
Okay, great.
We'll work on that. And Mayor Hune, we'll coordinate that with you to make sure that multiple people are reaching out to the same people, maybe come up with a list and kind of split it up or something.
Right. We just had that email, just, well, there's a public comment today from bike, bicyclists that went out to the council. That would be, that group should send a letter, too. So we can provide that. That's good to know, Dale.
Great.
Okay, next we will turn to Mr. Josh Weitz to talk about state funding opportunities or legislative updates, I guess, or multi-funding as well.
So you watch that road, too.
Just thinking that.
I'm not driving.
Oh, okay, good.
I'm like, how is she driving? I'm looking at the computer.
Tell my daughter to drive under her.
British car, otherwise she's sitting in the passenger seat, but she's driving over there. So.
Oh, gosh.
Well.
Hi, Josh.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you. I'm not driving either. I will give you just a little update and then you can ask me questions on where we're at. I don't want to blather on too much. We haven't talked in, in a while. We are five weeks away from end of legislative session. And this week is the last week of hearings in policy committees for the whole session. Next week, we will have hearings in fiscal committees. And then the fiscal cutoff is actually next Friday, a week from this coming Friday. And then it'll be all floor time. So we're really, you know, starting to see light at the end of the tunnel. Probably more significant than that, we're starting to see budget proposals. Last week, the State Revenue Forecast Council came out with their update on how much money they expect to collect in the next four years. That's the budget outlook. And the state budget has wholly rebounded from the coronavirus recession. And it's really bizarre. I've never quite experienced something like this before. I remember advising you before session when you were putting our agenda together, saying, focus on capital budget and, you know, make sure transportation projects are in, but don't do anything in operating budget. They are actually compared to their February of 2020 revenue forecast, which was the last, which was the one that they built this budget on. They're now $300 million above that. So they have $300, $300 million for the next biennium, more than they did last February when they wrote this biennium's budget. So and, and that is, you know, dramatically largely our economic activity in the state is because of all this federal stimulus spending. There's no question about it. So today, we actually saw transportation, House and Senate transportation budget proposals. These are current law or no new revenue transportation budget proposals. This is not a transportation package. This would just be what they, what, what things would look like if they don't adopt a new gas tax. They have managed, because of the influx of the last round of federal dollars, thank you, Dale, they managed not to have to cut significantly. They are pushing out some projects, but not very many and not very dramatically. So it's basically kind of a hold steady situation in the transportation world. We will see the Senate operating budget on Thursday. We'll see the House operating budget on Friday. There will be hearings and floor action on them over the weekend. And we expect to see both House and Senate to have their budgets approved towards the beginning, middle of next week. That really then sets up situation where the House and Senate will start talking about the differences between the two of them and resolving those budget differences. We do expect to see a pretty healthy capital budget, but I do think, as we'll hear from Representative Caldera in particular later this week, I think she said she made $100 million worth of capital budget requests this biennium. And there was, you know, I think a total of $400 million available for budget requests. So, so she asked for a lot of money. I don't know how our request for the sports complex will be doing, but we can ask them about that. So I guess my main story there is capital budget will, there will be projects, but it's not going to be nearly as, as big as the demand out there. On transportation, we have heard that the Senate Democrats are starting to actually come into alignment with a position that would actually open the door for a possible revenue package. The, the big hangup here has been controversy around how much and how much carbon money to use in the transportation budget and what the revenue source for that carbon money should be. The Senate Chair of Transportation and the Senate Chair of the Environment Committee have come to agreement on a cap and trade bill that puts a significant amount of money into the transportation budget. The Senate Democrats caucused on that today. I haven't heard how that went. But they're in the process of, of putting something together. So we could still, even before the end of session, see possibility of passage of a revenue package. Our projects, Senator Randall has been successful in getting all of our projects and then some into the Senate proposal. It's a little unclear. Representative Young's not on transportation anymore. It's a little unclear whether or not, how we would come out in a House package. Let's see. I think otherwise, we've been tracking some bills for you. You know, the, the multifamily tax exemption issue was a little bit of a surprise for us that, that we actually can, Gig Harbor is actually eligible for the current program. So we have kind of dropped out of that conversation. That bill is moving forward still. Probably more importantly, there are active conversations going on between AWC and the housing advocates about a budget proviso that would set up a study for ways to further make the MFTE program easier to use for cities like you. We haven't heard yet whether or not that language has been agreed to, but we're still sort of working on that. The bill that would give you permanent flexibility to have open, to have meetings during emergencies without having, to have the governor provide that authority through proclamation, that is still moving forward. That looks like it's going to pass. So that won't have immediate impact for you, but if we ever end up in this situation again, and you need to meet in an emergency manner, you would have the authority to do that. And let's see, the Main Street legislation, we have weighed in on that. That's a expansion of that program that looks like it is in the Senate Ways and Means Committee, coming across from the House. It's not been scheduled for executive action yet, and I'm wondering if that's been hung up a little bit. I think those are probably, we're tracking a few other bills for you, but I think I'll just stop there and see if there's questions about anything specifically.
Hey, Josh.
Yeah.
Um, my internet's bad, so I might have just missed it, but both the House and the Senate transportation budget proposals include money for the Tacoma Narrows to cover the, the toll revenue gap for the Tacoma Narrows Bridge. So sorry if that was already talked about, but I think it's 33 million.
No, I didn't talk about it. Thank you for covering that. That is a good thing.
That's great. That's great.
Does that mean they won't increase the tolls by that 25 cents that they have the capability of doing?
I think what it means is that they will only increase it the 25 cents that they're authorized. They won't have to go higher than that.
Okay. So they may still take that 25 cents, but that would be the highest that it would go.
I think you should plan on the 25 cents going into place. I think the question is whether it will have to go higher.
Well, I think people would be a lot happier with that 25 cents being taken if we cannot have a carbon tax or a road user charge tax or both, or, you know, all these other ones they want to tack on right now. I would bet people would rather take that 25 cent increase just to go across the bridge than the increase to just drive anywhere. So hopefully, some of those will get squashed down. Do you know how those are going? Some of those, the road user charge and the and if that still includes GPS tracking or not?
I don't know about GPS tracking. I know there is money in both proposals to continue to implement the study and rollout's the wrong way to say it, but continue exploring that direction. Sort of to your other question, too, the capital gains tax passed the Senate. I fully expect that to pass the House. We've heard from House leadership, they expect to pass that this year. The goal there basically is to try and get that in front of the Supreme Court and see whether or not it is constitutional. There's an ongoing tax structural work group that is going to continue through next year that will be providing recommendations. I think that the intent is to know with some certainty whether or not a capital gains tax can be part of that discussion or not.
And that's 7.5% on stocks. Is that correct? And is that is that for, I mean?
That it, I think it's an income tax, and twice now, the Supreme Court has shut it down because it's unconstitutional.
Right. They're doing it on stock transactions as a way of income tax, I've heard.
Yeah.
I'm not real estate, but, you know, which just makes people change where they want to invest.
Yeah.
And is that, is that, would that actually be 2020? Would you file that on your 2021 returner? Or would it be 2022?
No, and it may even be 2023. And it is 7% on any gain above 250,000.
Oh.
And that does, and that does exclude real estate, as you point out.
So you'd have to have $200,000 of of gains in order for it to take effect?
Right.
Oh.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's that's nice to know.
Yeah. There is some carve out language for for the sale of small businesses, but there's been a lot of discord and discussion about how effective that small business sale exemption will will work. It excludes your retirement accounts. So, yeah, it's controversial.
Yeah. Well, as Tracy had mentioned, the carbon tax, I mean, we were, what, it's 50, right now, it's 50 cents on a gallon, and it might go to 75. I mean, is that getting, is there overwhelming support, you think, to get that carbon tax to pass?
There is majority support. I'm not sure if I'm going to say overwhelming support. And it's a, it's, there's two, two components, actually, to it. There are two separate bills. One is a low carbon fuel standard. And it's not actually a tax at all. It doesn't have, it doesn't legislatively create a new revenue source. It just increases the price of tax. So what it says is your gas that you buy at the pump has to have a certain percentage of of low carbon fuels. So basically bio stock in your gasoline now, which is going to be more expensive to produce. And so that'll, you know, the thinking is that will raise the, that will actually reduce carbon in the atmosphere, but it will raise the price of fuel. So that's one component. The second is a cap and trade proposal, which puts a cap on any, you know, industry or sector that produces carbon. If you're above that cap, then you have to buy on the free market credits to mitigate for that. And so the revenue from purchasing those credits, the state realizes a benefit from that. And over time, that cap is lowered. And so it takes into account the fact that you're going to have a decreasing revenue source over time. And that is, let's see, that will, you know, will likely increase the cost of of fuel as well. And it's a little hard to say how these are all going to interact. That's been a point of significant legislative debate. But we do know that, you know, prices go up in a couple of different ways, probably.
Okay.
This is a little off the subject, but I I hear these little rumors that the Inslee and some of the state is trying to get rid of natural gas because it's not renewable, which I'm not supportive of getting rid of natural gas. And is there, is is there, is that true?
Yes, he did have a bill. It was titled something like Clean Carbon Clean Building, something to that effect. And, yeah, it was aimed at phasing out the use of natural gas. Annika, you might know this. I don't remember. We haven't been tracking that bill closely, but I don't think it moved forward.
Okay.
It just boggles my mind that in a pandemic year, we end up with a surplus, but they're still wanting to raise taxes insanely high. This, I mean, it just, I'm, and I know this is why there's been so much contention down there and fighting because, you know, you would think that putting some projects on hold till we get caught up is probably a good idea, but over taxing people coming out of a pandemic that are still struggling? We're still in the pandemic. It's not over yet. We're not, we're in phase three. What, today? We started phase three? So and then there's no, there, because there's no reopening plan officially, and there's no like official anything that's going to say when this is going to be over. Why are we taxing people, especially if we have money left over? I mean, that's a gift. No one expected that. No one thought we were going to come out ahead at the end of 2020. But we have in the state, we have in the city. I mean, all over the place, it's been uncanny, just weird. But good, in a good way. So it's like, okay, some of these taxes, why can't we just put these on hold as well till the next year? Give us another year post pandemic, hopefully. I don't know. And that's just my personal thoughts and and not going to make a difference for this meeting, but I'm just, if you can sense my own frustration with this, you know, I'm working with people on fixed incomes and bottom lines or bottom social security income. And we're going to do this to them, I mean, to everyone, but to these folks especially, and our seniors that are on fixed incomes. This is tragic for them. And and it's a large part of the population that that, so anyway, it's frustrating, but thank you.
Issue, and I think people are affected differently depending on on their income.
Yeah.
Yeah, not everyone is, anyway, it's complicated. And certainly not everyone is going to take a hit from some of these initiatives. Different populations are going to be affected differently. Right. Does anybody else have any questions of Mr. Lern or Reese?
I do, if I can, for Josh.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So obviously, down in Olympia, a lot of police reform bills that I was tracking closely, worked very hard on 1202 and 1203, which I understand are dead and not expected to come back as zombies. But 1054, the police tactics bill, I know it's not on our legislative agenda, but do you have any words of wisdom on that? What's going on with that?
Not specifically, Chief B C. I have not been working those bills. So sort of generalized knowledge more than anything. My sense is that the tactics bill has gotten at least significantly worked out. I don't know if it's totally resolved or ever will be totally resolved, but I think that that is one that has is, you know, is going to pass and at least in the conversations I hear about it, it's not like hair on fire bad. In the same way, right, that being able to take down that liability bill, which we did work on 1202, that was a big deal. You know, that was a, that was a panic. Everything's not, that was not a good proposal. So having that not move forward was good. I know. Yeah, that's about what I know on it. I know the legislature is very committed to getting some of those bills across the line, though.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry, that wasn't a very good answer.
No, it's about what I've heard last, too. I just wanted to see if I'm getting the same message. So thank you.
Yeah.
I do think that AWC is trying to work out last week. I think there was a amendment adopted in committee that was problematic. And I do think AWC is taking the lead on working with the sponsors to work out that issue for the tactics bill.
Okay, anything else?
I would just agree with Tracy. It does frustrate me. You should be happy that your that your citizens that you're getting by, and you shouldn't tax people more as a result of it. But there's a lot of, but the government doesn't really make sense, so.
No, it doesn't.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. If that's it, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All seconded, all those in favor.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Dale.
Nice to see you.